All right, welcome, everybody. It's seven o'clock. We'll go ahead and get started. It's Monday, June 21st, 2021. Appreciate all of y'all coming out. Today, we have the Deacon Michael Garrett from St. Thomas, the Apostle Catholic Church, 4300 King Springs Road, joining us for the invocation and pledge. Everybody, please rise. Thank you, Deacon, for being with us tonight. Appreciate you being here. Item two is agenda changes. We have none. Item three is the mayoral report. And the only thing I have this evening, I want to recognize some individuals who have made our City Hall a lot brighter. We had some artists who have donated some of their talents to make our hallways and everything look really good here in City Hall. And some of them are here. We've got Howard Campbell, Debbie Childery, Ann Ledbetter, Jean Ledbetter, Quontez Harper, Shelley Lighthizer, and Lisa Stockdale. And we had a little reception for them prior to the meeting. And I'd like, if you're here, please rise and be recognized.[245.56][245.56](APPLAUSE). And if y'all haven't had a chance to see what they've done, take a right out of the council chambers and go down the hall where you pay your water bill and into the HR conference room over there. Really, really good stuff, and I really thank y'all very much for what you do. Item four is land issue zonings annexations. We have one item, 4A, 2021-248, public hearing, V21-054, allow encroachment into the 75-foot impervious setback for a front porch landlot 554 at 3700 Ashwood Drive. Kristin Taherevik. Rusty?
Yes, sir. This is a variance request to erect a small front porch onto an existing house. The existing house is located within the 75-foot impervious setback from the stream that runs along the street. The house was constructed prior to the adoption of the stream ordinance. City Engineering has looked at the proposed encroachment and doesn't feel like it's going to negatively impact the stream. Community Development's recommending approval of the requested variance.
This is a public hearing. Anybody who wishes to speak for or against this, please come forward and be sworn in by our city attorney. All right, seeing none, we'll close the public hearing, and I'll turn it over to Mr. Tim Gould. It's in his Ward 6.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Appreciate it. It's a pretty simple variance request, but unfortunately, our resident ran into some problems with their contractor and doing a great job of fixing up a house, and really appreciate what you all are doing for the neighborhood there, and hopefully this moves forward without a hitch. So with that, Mr. Mayor, move to approve item 4A, 2021-248, as previously read.
Have a motion. Do I have a second? Second by Dr. Wheaton. All those in favor, please vote. Councilman Lindley votes yes. And I should say, Councilman Lindley is away on family business and is here on the phone with us this evening. So what's the final vote? Ms. Heather? That's approved 7-0. Thank you very much. Item five is privileged licenses. We have none. Item six is formal business. Item 6A, 2021-256, approval of the downtown concept design and authorize the mayor to sign and execute all related documents. Rusty, do we have a graphic that we can put up of the downtown concept design? And I'm going to handle the background on this. First, I want to say that I'm excited about this concept and what's ahead for the downtown and for the rest of the city. We've been through an extremely tough 18 months, and as I've been telling everybody, it's about ready to be really fun doing what we're doing. And I'm so honored to serve you in this role and work with this council. The proposal we are considering tonight is not new or rushed. It's almost two years in the making. Original recommendations for this proposal were put forward by Pond &amp; Company, who did a downtown master plan study in 2019. We bid this study out and selected the best firm trained in urban planning, engineering, and architecture who put forward the low bid. Pond &amp; Company was that firm. We had input from nearly 700 residents over seven meetings, and Pond did an excellent job using their vast expertise to provide recommendations for the downtown redevelopment. The study was presented to this council in August, and we did not formally adopt the study, but rather looked at it as a menu of options from which to choose the path we wanted to take forward as a city. When I campaigned, I heard from thousands of residents about the need for a downtown refresh to activate stale areas and bring energy, and I believe this concept and redesign will achieve that goal. In addition to the downtown study several months ago, we have also recently had much discussion with the council and two public sessions, input sessions, where almost 150 residents attended and shared thoughts. We also received hundreds of comments and recommendations on social media and through email. This proposal has been in the paper, on the website, on signage, announced at council meetings, and on social media. In fact, this concept has received more public feedback than any item, any one item we've ever addressed in my public service, in my time in public service. And I want to thank each and every citizen who has weighed in on this, what is a very important decision for our city, that you are all so passionate and so involved is why I love this city so much. The response to the plan has been overwhelmingly positive, and we were able to hear great feedback on ways to improve the design, including traffic calming on King Street, aesthetics of the parking deck, and moving the new restrooms, among others. I put this plan forward for action because I believe it opens up and activates the area where the fountain in front of the library currently exists by converting it to green space and eliminating the roundabout. When I go by the Veterans Memorial Green, which will not be changed at all by this plan, there are people throwing the frisbee, playing ball, walking dogs, or just hanging out with friends and family. The fountain area is largely unused, the fountain is broken, the pavers are all beat up, it's overgrown, and the roundabout is not pedestrian-friendly. By replacing the fountain and removing the roundabout, we extend the pedestrian-friendly area that individuals and families can enjoy. It also connects that area with the pond and with the new park and brewery that is coming next to the community center. And that Stillfire Brewery out of Swanee, y'all check it out if you haven't. It's going to be great. The park will have a playground, pet-friendly area, stage, open area with tables and outdoor games, and they are great community partners, as they've shown in Swanee with their Savior Fire Foundation and all of the things that they do for Children's Healthcare of Atlanta. And it's a very, very good business. It also changes the dynamic of our concerts by moving the stage in front of the community center where everybody will now be able to see, rather than the library steps where only some of those in the fountain area can see. And what it does not change is the annual Junkel Festivals, Taste of Smyrna, other events, or Christmas tree lighting or decorations for the holidays. We are adding a light at Powder Springs and Atlanta Road to create a dedicated left for residents and visitors. We are adding traffic calming features on King Street to make it safer, and we have pedestrian safety improvements coming to Powder Springs Street from the downtown area to Campbell High School as well. We also have needed additional parking for a long time downtown, and the new parking deck will take care of that with a net gain of 220 spaces. The Arts and Culture Task Force will work on a plan to present to council to make the deck aesthetically pleasing with murals and landscaping. The project is paid for with SPOLOST dollars that voters approved overwhelmingly in November and comes out of the downtown improvements and parking deck line items of that SPOLOST approval. I'm proud of this city council for their work in presenting this plan and moving our downtown area forward. I will also say that this plan does not affect or come at the expense of other planned projects in other areas of the city. We have significant plans for South Cobb Drive, a new aquatics facility, and a splash pad by the river, just to name a few. I encourage all of you to either attend or tune in to the State of the City address for more details. It'll be at the Smyrna Community Center Wednesday, July 28th at 6:00 PM. It's the first one we've ever done in the evening. We're doing it that way so that more residents have the opportunity to attend. It's free for all, free to all to come, and it'll be streamed online as well and available. The recording will be available afterwards. I want everybody to be able to be in tune with what we're doing. This has been an open and transparent process. As with anything of this magnitude, we're never going to make everybody happy. And I'm sure you'll hear in a few minutes, Councilwoman Wilkinson is passionate and doesn't want the fountain or roundabout to go away. Councilman Welsh wants the parking deck moved, and these are just personal opinions that I respectfully disagree with. If you turn back the clock to when the downtown was built, you had similar passionate feelings on both sides, and I think most of us would agree that the downtown turned out pretty good. You elected us to make decisions, and that's exactly what we're going to do tonight. The concept has the support of several members of this city council, the Downtown Development Authority, the Smyrna Urban Design Commission, downtown business owners including Smyrna Prep School, Porchlight, Atkins Park, Zuka, Vintage Tavern, Corner Taqueria, the Wine Market, and the Bourbon and Cigar Bar, among others. The next step, if approved, is to get into the details about landscaping and new tree plantings, textures and surfaces, fixtures and finishes, all the types of details that will make this concept beautiful, active, pedestrian-friendly, new space for the next generations. And that, combined with what's coming soon between the community center and Atlanta Road, is transformational for this city. And with that, I'm going to open it up for comment from council. If you'd like to speak, please let me know. Mr. Welch?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. There we go. As Derek just mentioned, I am in opposition to the plan, and I'm going to give several reasons for it. But first and foremost, I think I attended Susan Wilkinson's meeting on Saturday, and the main theme that came out of that meeting was people weren't necessarily just totally opposed to the plan, but they wanted to see some other options available out there to us. We saw this plan the first time, I believe, in August of this year. That was the first time that the council had it in a little charrette that was in the report itself. And then about, I believe it was June the 3rd of this month, we saw this plan that's not flashed up on the board, but we saw the big poster of it that showed the plan that was proposed, and it's the same plan that was shown to us in August. But we haven't seen any other options, and there are some good parts to the plan, and there are some things, as Derek just mentioned. I am definitely opposed to putting this parking lot where it's proposed, simply because we're putting a 110-foot parking deck on a 98-foot lot. And we're doing the same thing that we accuse developers are doing all the time. You're putting too much on too little. We're going to have to squeeze into the parking lot of the police station. The parking deck's going to be as tall as the police station, and you know, for a police station, our police station is a pretty nice architectural feature in the downtown area. It looks nice. We're going to block it. If you're coming from the south, you're going to see a shoebox sitting out there that looks like a parking deck. I don't care what you do to it, if you bring the arts council in, no offense to you artists out there, but it's still going to look like a parking deck. And that's just not something that we really, I personally, want to see out there. I'd like to see it go into a different location. In the first place, we've managed for 25, 30 years without a parking deck. I feel like we're spending $4 million, $4.5 million to build a parking deck somewhat for a brewery, and I don't think we should be doing that. But nonetheless, that's my number-one item. Number two is we still owe money on this area down there. We don't owe a whole lot of money left on it, but we still have part of our bond indebtedness that we took out 30 years ago for these projects. And finally, you know, the traffic flow coming through the roundabout is a good traffic flow. And we talked about it in the pre-council meeting here just a few minutes ago about some changes that are coming to the school, and this is one of the main thoroughfares to get to Campbell High School. And all of the students, now, we're going to have other routes to go around it, but this is the main thoroughfare now that people use to get to and from the Campbell High School. I don't think it's as good of a traffic plan as what we've got now. There has been no traffic study conducted on the overall effect of this elimination of the roundabout, and I don't think that there's one proposed for the elimination, to do a study for the elimination of the roundabout. I think we should review that and see what the effects of it are going to be, but that is not proposed at this point. And finally, you know, I back up to my number-one item. I'd just like to see us take some time to look at some other options out there. I sketched an option out one day last week in 15 minutes, emailed it out to the council, and I'm not expecting that to be the plan, but the intent of it was to show that there's 10 other options out there. Let's look at some other options instead of just taking the first one that we get and deciding that that's the plan that we wanted to do. With that, Mr. Mayor, I'll close.
Thank you, Mr. Welch. I should have started with Councilman Lindley. This is in Ward 3. Like I said, he's joined us by phone, and I'm going to ask him to make any comments that he'd like now.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, and good evening, everybody. I think the mayor laid out a pretty sweeping vision, one that endorses wholeheartedly. I think one of the refrains while we were all out on the campaign trail in 2019 was, in fact, that downtown had grown a little tired and needed some attention and maybe some redirection. The bold initiative has been noted a couple of times, I think, set in motion one of the most robust resident inquiries to date, and it involved over 700 people plus the folks that have engaged in the last month or so. So I think it is pretty clear to me what the direction of our community is. I think further, as the mayor noted, and I think everybody expects, that there will be a lot of details to be determined. This is approval of the concept, and I think it's wise and in keeping, certainly with the message, the overall message, I would note, that I'm hearing from folks in Ward 3 and neighboring wards. I'm proud to represent the downtown complex, proud of what Smyrna did 30-plus years ago, and sort of rethinking, redesigning, and setting in motion the massive growth and making us the premier community in the county and in the area today. So we certainly don't want to do anything to damage any of that momentum, and I believe what has been set forth in concept will continue us down that path. So I wholeheartedly support it, and at the appropriate time, Mr. Mayor will motion to pass.
Wait a second.
Thank you, Mr. Lindley.
Is he making the motion right now?
No, he said at the appropriate time. If anybody else would like to speak, please click your button, and I'll recognize you.
Okay. I would like to speak too, as well. Thank you. I don't want to repeat everything that Councilman Welsh said, but a lot of his comments and concerns are also concerns that I have in terms of the parking deck and the traffic flow there. I feel like we haven't done the study necessary when we're making changes, and the people most affected by these changes are people that live west of this area, I feel like, and those are citizens that I represent, and I have voiced my concerns several times. Back in August, when the plan was presented to the council, it was a draft plan, and it was during the pandemic when we all had our masks on and we were trying to talk, and I actually listened to those minutes today, and it was emphasized it was a high-level plan, and it looked at a lot of different things and made suggestions. It made a suggestion about doing a turbo roundabout at King Street and Concord Street. It also suggested turning, doing a lane diet on Atlanta Road and putting in parallel parking and taking out the median and putting in a turn lane. So there were a lot of suggestions in the plan that we, you know, we can look at and talk about, and that was the way it was presented. It was a high-level plan, and it was meant, it was said in the meeting, it was meant to start the conversations. And with that, I feel like we have jumped, skipped a lot of steps and gone straight to Kroy Engineering to draw up this plan. It was also something that didn't come to the council for discussion before that step happened. That also being said, from a design background, not an architectural designer, which is quite different, but the way you think and the way you address design projects and the thumbnails and you build upon them and you go through a process, and I believe that you also go through a process with this kind of thing, and I feel like we missed some of those steps, and I think the devil is in the details, and I think those are vital steps to come out with the best design for the community. And I just feel like we're missing those steps. I think that our downtown has a lot of character. I mean, I do agree that it needs some refresh, and I don't, you know, I don't want to dictate what those are. So contrary to what the mayor said about not removing the fountain and the roundabout, I just feel like we should be going through the process. And I think the roundabout does work for the people that live in the area. I also feel like it works beautifully for concerts, and I've always admired how well-designed it was and how many people you can get into the downtown for an event and how the traffic flows around that area and how much parking is available for those events without having a traffic problem. And I actually live one mile west of the downtown, and it's always been very impressive to me. And I just feel like we should be examining that a lot more closely with a traffic study and a traffic analysis because we don't know where those cars are going to have to go elsewhere and what that's going to do to the other network of streets. I mean, right now, it is a network of the neighborhood streets and working with that traffic circle, and it works. And so that's my concern going forward, that we're really messing up that flow and without looking at a traffic study to see where that flow is going to go. Anyway, and I also think it's just a very classic, charming downtown for the events, the Christmas tree lighting, and I feel like we can close it off for events. I just wish we were looking at other options for this refresh of the downtown area. And, okay, thank you.
Mr. Gould?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. First, I want to thank everybody for coming out tonight and sharing their opinions, either via email recently or at the recent public meetings. It's really an important part of the process, and no matter how this discussion ends up tonight, you all have made, had an impact. There's been a lot of good feedback at the meetings, which already impacted the design. So thank you all for that. I'm supportive of the plan for a few reasons. Generally, I think it'll be a year-round space for our community to use. It'll be more open green space. It'll be more pedestrian-friendly, in my view. Traffic, I'll touch on in a moment, but I believe there's plenty of other routes that minimal traffic that goes through the roundabout will be dissipated and will be handled fine. Obviously, the space will give us larger gathering areas. A lot of other cities around us have that feature. Right now, we don't have that ability. We have wonderful events, but everybody's all kind of spread out, and I think I'm looking forward to having some of our sort of birthdays or whatnot just in a big, open, big, open space. And I think this design allows us to achieve that goal. There's no design to be perfect. A lot of opinions up here and a lot of opinions around town. So no matter where we ended up, there'll be some folks who would not like a certain aspect of it. There's no doubt about it. And what I think we're talking about tonight is not a final design. It's an overall concept that allows us to move forward, engage some talented design folks, and come back with more refined features. And your input will have an effect on those final designs. Couple points. Corky mentioned the parking deck and not agreeing for the need of it. I think there might be some pretty strong disagreement from business owners in the area, but just so y'all know, that's not a new concept. That was in our SPOLOST that we all voted on. We all had extensive discussions about it. So the parking deck downtown, even the locations being selected, it's been on the table for a long time. So that's not a new issue. Traffic to Campbell High School, they've done a few things to cause some challenges, but the Powder Springs to the traffic circle is not the main thoroughfare to that high school. My kids go there. We go down Belmont. There's several other ways to get there. So if we do remove the traffic circle, that's not the main connection to Campbell High So with that, I just appreciate your input, and I think I'm supportive of the plan. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Gould. Nobody else has requested to speak. Is there anybody? Mr. Wagner?
Yeah, I just wanted to, I think, you know, I look at this with a mind towards what I think our eventual, my eventual goal, what our eventual goal, I think, should be for the downtown, which I think is a more open, pedestrian-friendly place. You know, I want to look at ways to move the cars kind of out towards the fringes as much as possible so that the central core of our downtown is a place where everyone can walk around and feel safe. And we know that those kinds of spaces are ones that create more engagement with the community. It's community gathering spots. It's places that people can come just whenever they want and spend time, right? It's not someplace that you're going to drive your car to, you're going to go eat at the restaurant, you're going to leave. Hopefully, this can create something where people are going to be able to enjoy the space as a whole rather than individual units. And overall, I think the plan does that. You know, there's concerns that I have about bits of it that I think we will be able to hopefully deal with as we move through the process. You know, the parking deck, I've been around enough places, I think, that we can do something with the parking deck to make it not just be an eyesore. There are a lot of actually good-looking parking decks that we can do, and I think that also helps encourage that we're going to get people around and hopefully eventually, again, open up more of the space in downtown because we have this option for people to go to. My only concern really through this whole process has been with the extension of King Street connecting it to Powder Springs and concern over splitting two different pedestrian-focused areas with some traffic through the center. I've had those conversations with the mayor, I've had those conversations with other people, with engineers as well, and I think that we're in a place, even with this, that we're going to be able to have conversations about how do we make that road as pedestrian-friendly and encourage cars to go the other directions as much as possible while still having this access when it's necessary. access when it's necessary. So, I think overall, this does, in a small part of downtown, in a relatively small part of downtown, get us closer to a place where we're focusing on people, we're not focusing on cars moving through the downtown. It's opening it up hopefully for more people to use it and a place where people can come together and create more community in our city.
Thank you, Mr. Wagner. Dr. Wheaton.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. You know, one of the hardest things about a hard decision is that it's a hard decision. And, you know, I really appreciate the good feedback that a lot of residents sent to me, particularly over the last week, week and a half or so, some that were from Ward 7, some that were from outside of Ward 7 and various parts of the city. One of the big things that I saw as a constant through some of those emails, and I actually agreed with them totally, was a need to really pay attention to some of the details of what is being proposed. And I totally agree with that. And I've had many conversations, had conversations with Mayor Norton about that as well. And one of the good things about, you know, the question of whether or not we will approve a concept is that there are opportunities down the line to actually get into those details. This is not a question of do we start digging tomorrow. That is a separate issue. This is a question of how do we even begin the process of moving forward. I will tell you, one of the many things that I'm passionate about seeing our city go in a direction of is really having a stronger focus on our environment and having a stronger focus on how, really, the feel of the community that we have. And that's one of the reasons why I'm actually, you know, more enthused about this idea of adding more green space, adding more pedestrian access points, adding more flow. And I think that the details of how that works, where crossings will go, where speed humps may go, where we may plant certain types of vegetation, where we really focus on the environment there, do a great deal. It's just not as beautiful and picturesque. I remember the first time I drove, when I first moved in this community and drove down the street and I saw the fountain, I said, "Yeah, it is beautiful. It certainly is." But if the fountain is in disrepair and the pavers are in disrepair and all of that is going on, that just presents to me an opportunity to think about what we could do if we did something different. And I think this is a good opportunity to really think about that. So, I am enthused about the idea of moving forward, and I'm enthused about the idea of having a discussion and really, really going through these comments even more carefully down the line to think, okay, how can we address, you know, these particular issues that are these very important aesthetic issues that have to be incorporated to make it really work well for everyone? And I do think that is achievable with the plan that is presented to us.
Thank you, Dr. Wheaton. Now, I'll add, you know, you said shovels don't go in the ground tomorrow if this is approved, and that's exactly right. Some of the planning for the parking deck and maybe some of the other project in the green between the community center and Atlanta Road may start earlier than that, but this will not disrupt any of our festivals that we have planned, including the Taste of Smyrna and the Junkle Festival that are in October and the birthday celebration, all of those things. The first shovel wouldn't go in the ground in the fountain area there until at least November. So, just to that point. The next person to sign up to speak is Mr. Pickens.
Thank you, Mayor. I just want to say, I know there's a lot of conversation that's been had on this over the past month or so, and I just believe this is a good, positive change for the city, for our downtown. And anytime you can get rid of concrete and road and put in green space, it's a big win for people. And if you go out there now, most of the time, the roundabout and area around that is not used. But if you look at the Veterans Memorial Green, it's always full of people. People are using it, hanging out, having picnics, kids are running around, and you don't see that at the roundabout. So, we're just expanding that and making it better for people to use. And in the end, we could debate this for the next 10 years, look at 20 different proposals, and there'll always be something that someone doesn't like. And I know in the end, when this is done, we won't even remember the roundabout because we'll be using that green space, and it'll be a big benefit to the community.
Thank you, Mr. Pickens.
I was waiting for everyone else, but if I'd like to say something.
Any other discussion?
I would like to say a few more things.
Okay. Ms. Wilkinson.
Thank you. So, I guess I would also say that the roundabout is used, and it's used in a couple, I mean, it's used for different functions. It's used quite a bit with handling the traffic that goes in and out to work every day that lives in that neighborhood. And I really feel strongly that we need to be doing a traffic study before we take this road out. And I heard Councilman Gould mention about that this is not the main entrance or way to get to Campbell High School. And I guess I feel like that maybe some of my point was missed because the school is closing off Fleming, access to the back of the school where there are 400 to 500 parking spaces, and also a drop-off area. We have not seen what that's going to do to the neighborhood west of the library yet because the school is still working, and we've been through a pandemic, and we haven't seen the traffic that that's going to take to the neighborhood. The traffic that the neighborhood has already been experiencing due to the school before they started these renovations is extreme. I mean, there is a bottleneck there every day, twice a day, extreme bottleneck with Ward Street and Powder Springs Street. When you close off, you're already closing off Fleming, and now we're going to limit access on Powder Springs. And then, we've also limited access on Wendy Hill with the plan of Wendy Hill. You will no longer be able to come from Atlanta and take a left onto Ward Street. So, all of these changes are, it's like a funnel, you know? You're forcing these changes into other areas, and it is very important for us to be looking at that before we make these drastic changes to the roads. And I love green space, too. I know the community wants more green space. I think there, you know, there's ways to get green space, and maybe this is not the only option to get green space. And that is my, you know, the challenge here. I would like to see us look at more options and look at more options for this area, this area in the downtown to address all the different needs that we have as a community. The concerts, the, you know, the people that live there, that's why I was talking about the network of the streets. We have the Junkle Festivals and the concerts and the parking. Anyway, I'd like to see us look at a more, you know, look at more options and take our time a little bit more before we move to make these changes.
Thank you, Ms. Wilkinson. Any other discussion? Okay, seeing none, I'll turn it over to Mr. Lindley for a motion.
I want to.
Excuse me, Mr. Lindley. Ms. Wilkinson has.
I want to move to table this item, Item 6A 2021-256, to table the approval of the downtown concept design and authorize the mayor to not sign and execute all related documents at this time.
Okay, we have a motion to table this item. Do we have a second? Have a second by Mr. Welch. All those in favor of tabling will vote yes. All those against tabling will vote no. That motion is defeated five to two with Councilmember Welch and Wilkinson voting for it. Mr. Lindley?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I appreciate the robust debate this evening and understand fully that we are going to move toward with the concept and get to a bunch of details. So, with that, motion to pass is previously read and presented.
I have a motion by Mr. Lindley. Do I have a second? Seconded by Mr. Gould. All those in favor, please vote. That's approved five to two with Councilman Welch and Councilwoman Wilkinson voting in the negative. All right, next item is 6B 2021-257, approval of amendment number two to the Community Development Block Grant, CDBG subrecipient agreement number CD21-C21SA and CD21-C21SA-F for the increase in the city's grant award in the total amount of $29,840.93. This increases the city's total amount to be received for the 2021 CDBG allocation to $308,480, and authorize the mayor to sign and execute all related documents. Ms. Maschery, the background, please.
Yes, sir. Over the past several years, CDBG funds invested in the city have paid for numerous public improvements, and the City of Smyrna continues to be a subrecipient of the Cobb County Community Development Block Grant program. Effective June 9, 2021, the subrecipient agreement is amended to reflect the changes as noted. All other language requirements and provisions of the original subrecipient agreement shall remain unchanged and in full force. The amount is broken down as follows. Administration and planning increases by $850.68. Public facilities increases by $28,990.25. Staff recommends approval of amendment number two to the Community Development Block Grant Subrecipient Agreement number CD21-C21SA and CD21-C21SA-F for the increase in the city's grant award in the total amount of $29,840.93. This increases the city's total amount to be received for the 2021 CDBG allotment to $308,480, and authorize the mayor to sign and execute all related documents.
If I'm right, we've seen this before, and that was when they said we weren't going to get the money, right? And so, we voted on that, and now they've decided we're going to get it, and we're voting to get it back, basically, right?
That's correct.
All right, we'll turn it over to Budget Chairman, Mr. Corky Welch.
I'd like to make a motion to approve Item 6B 2021-257 as previously read by the mayor.
I have a motion by Mr. Welch, seconded by Mr. Wagner. All those in favor, please vote. Okay. That's approved six-zero with Ms. Wilkinson absent from the vote. Item C 2021-255, approval to purchase a hyper-converged computer infrastructure system from Dell Technologies, One Dell Way, Round Rock, Texas, 78682, for the replacement of the city's current server clusters and storage network for the amount of $323,276, utilizing the State of Georgia Department of Administrative Services Contract C00000355068, and authorize the mayor to sign all related documents. Ms. Maschery, the background, please.
Currently, the city utilizes two Microsoft Hyper-V virtual server clusters with three servers each and a SAN to provide data and compute storage. The servers are nearing the end of their life status, and the SAN has reached usable capacity and cannot be expanded. Additionally, the support for the SAN will run out by the end of 2021, and renewal may not be possible because the manufacturer no longer produces SAN hardware. The hyper-converged computing infrastructure being requested replaces both the servers and SAN with a system that can be expanded if needed and is provided by Dell Technologies, which the city has used for computers, laptops, and servers for 20 years, and has a proven track record of providing full support. In addition to the hardware, the system will come with the most current Microsoft server software, which will replace our current version that is also at the end of its life. IT would like to replace the city's Hyper-V server cluster and storage area network equipment that has reached the end of life and end of support status from the manufacturer. To purchase a hyper-converged computer infrastructure system from Dell Technologies, One Dell Way, Round Rock, Texas, 78682, for the amount of $323,276, utilizing the State of Georgia Department of Administrative Services Contract C00000355068. The IT Director and Finance Director recommend approval to purchase the hyper-converged computer infrastructure systems as defined in Dell Technology quotes 3000086571750.2 and 3000086571747.3 for the combined amount of $323,276.
Mr. Gould, you get all those contract numbers?
I got them memorized.
Okay, good. Any discussion? All right, we'll turn it over to Mr. Pickens for this item, please.
Thank you, Mayor. As was said in our meeting the other night, I think it was Corky that said this would hopefully end the server-down emails that we get pretty often. So, I'd like to make the motion to 2021-255.
I have a motion. Do I have a second? Seconded by Dr. Wheaton. All those in favor, please vote. Mr. Lindley votes in the affirmative. Ms. Wilkinson is absent. You've got her as voting negative there, but she's absent. Okay. Approved six-zero. Item D 2021-252, approval to amend the fiscal year 2021 budget for unbudgeted items and move funds into a CIP project. Ms. Maschery, the background, please.
A previous amendment was done to transfer reserves for traffic calming and the purchase of servers. The quote for the servers came in above initial estimates and will require an additional $50,000. The traffic calming is going to be a multi-year project, and the funds need to be transferred to the CIP fund, which is a multi-year fund. We need to amend the budget for these changes. We'll be using general fund reserves, fund balance for the additional $50,000. Staff recommends approval to amend the FY 2021 budget for unbudgeted items and to move funds into a CIP project.
Thank you, Ms. Maschery. Any discussion? All right, Mr. Lindley is Chair of, do we still have Mr. Lindley? He's Chair of the Traffic Calming Committee. I'm going to turn it over to him for a motion, please.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Motion to pass is previously presented.
I have a motion to pass. Do I have a second? Seconded by Mr. Gould. Okay, all those in favor, please vote. Let's do that vote again, Mr. Gould. That's approved six-zero. Item E, Ordinance 2021-14, approval of ordinance 2021-14 to amend Section 50-8 special-use permit for consumer fireworks in order to better regulate consumer fireworks to the extent allowed by state law and authorize the mayor to sign and execute all related documents. Ms. Maschery, the background, please.
Recently, the Georgia Legislature amended state laws to give local governments more authority over consumer fireworks in certain circumstances. In an effort to take advantage of this state law, the city amended its applicable ordinances on May 15, 2021 with ordinance number 2021-07. Under the state law, local governments have little authority to regulate fireworks on the last Saturday and Sunday in May, July 3 and July 4, the first Monday in September, and December 31 between 10:00 a.m. and midnight, and January 1 from 10:00 a.m. to 1:00 a.m. At other times, however, the local government may require fireworks to comply with its noise ordinance. This ordinance changes the time that fireworks are allowed so that it follows state law and allows the city to regulate fireworks as much as the state law allows. Additionally, the city has further amended the ordinance to include required signage and penalty. Staff recommends approval of ordinance number 2021-14 to amend Section 50-8 special-use permit for consumer fireworks in order to better regulate consumer fireworks to the extent allowed by state law and authorize the mayor to sign and execute all related documents.
So, it's my understanding with this tweak that we now have done everything that we can do within our powers of local government to regulate fireworks. Is that correct, Mr. Cochran? Okay. Any discussion? Dr. Wheaton, you want to handle this?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Now, this is definitely an important issue for a lot of our residents, for sure, and make sure that we are doing all we can to make sure regulating the use of fireworks within the community as appropriate as they should be. So, with that, make a motion to approve Ordinance 2021-14, which is Item 6E.
I have a motion seconded by Councilman Welch. All those in favor, please vote. That's approved. That's approved seven zero. Thank you. Item F, Resolution 2021-03, approve resolution 2021-03 in support of a submission of a rebuilding American infrastructure with sustainability and equity. It's RACE acronym, Grant Application, for a planning project of the Cumberland Multimodal Network Development Program and to authorize the mayor to sign and execute all related documents if necessary. From my understanding, this is supporting the effort underway to get funding for the bridge over 41 Cobb Parkway to the Battery from Smyrna. Is that correct?
It is.
Okay. Any other background? Okay. We'll turn this over to our Budget Chairman, Mr. Corky Welch.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. With that, I'd like to make a motion to approve item six F, RES 2021-03.
Have a motion seconded by Mr. Pickens. All those in favor, please vote. Mr. Lindley? Approved seven zero. Thank you. Item seven is commercial building permits. We have none. Item eight is the consent agenda. Ms. Mischeri, can you please read the consent agenda for council approval?
Yes. Item A, approval of the June 7, 2021, pre-council meeting minutes. Item B, 2021-38, approval of the June 7, 2021, mayor and council meeting minutes. Item C, 2021-2240, approval to purchase two 2023 GR 64B Mack chassis and Heild Durapack 5032 cubic yard rear loader using Sourcewell Cooperative Contract Number THC 112014 in the amount of $466,926 from Carolina Environmental Systems, Inc., 500 Lee Industrial Boulevard, Ostele, Georgia, 30168. And item D, 2021-260, approval of the renewal of the current Granicus Agreement for a period of five years with website graphical refresh in 2021, including eligibility to request a graphical refresh after completion of year four according to the terms of the agreement and to authorize the mayor to sign and execute all related documents.
Have a motion to approve the consent agenda. Seconded by Mr. Gould. Do I have a second? Seconded by Dr. Wheaton. All those in favor, please vote. That's approved seven zero. Thank you. Item nine is ward and committee reports. We'll start tonight with Mr. Glenn Pickens.
Thank you, Mayor. Just a quick announcement, the Committee on Short-Term Rentals will have another meeting this coming Wednesday at four to go over the second draft of the ordinance that we will hopefully bring to council next month. So if you have any questions or comments on it, please let me know, and if you want to attend, it's open to the public as well. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Pickens. Mr. Wagner?
No report this evening, Mr. Mayor.
Mr. Lindley?
No report this evening, sir.
Mr. Welch? Ms. Wilkinson?
No report, thank you.
Mr. Gould?
No report, Mr. Mayor.
Dr. Wheaton?
No report.
Everybody said everything they want to say, huh? I'll tell you, I'm very proud of this council. You have a very good council who's looking out for your interests, and I can tell you that even though we disagree as a body sometimes, everybody has their heart in the right place in trying to do the best for this city moving forward. So I'm pleased that we have this group representing y'all to the best of their ability without fear or favor, and thank you all for doing what you do. Item ten is show cause hearings. We have none. Item eleven is citizen input. We have a few folks signed up for citizen input this evening. The first is Alex Bakary, 3459 Shawnee Trail. Comments?
It's my opinion, and... Last five elections of 20... I believe this is apathy and lack of knowledge by the council. This current situation here, this last 20 won't be coming until January 1st of 22. All we had a chance in two meetings, and the only way people could find out is on Facebook, and a lot of people don't look under government. I disagree with the comments made by the mayor. Nobody knows about this project. Under this... 37,000-plus voters and taxpayers. But my questions were on another project. He says, "We're only talking about downtown." Well, downtown is just a part of the roughly 53 million. A bridge over 41, that's not our territory. Or what's in the, what you're doing with the environment. This 19, it should have been handed out to people. Know what's going on. It's a sad day that you've not taken the time to get to communicate with more people on this, how their money is being spent. They have the right to have their money, know how the money and the total package is other than downtown. For wine, great for the alcoholics, like our previous mayor. Or a parking garage, to go where? All we got is food downtown. I've lived here 35 years, I've never had a wrong parking downtown. There's plenty of parking down in Atkins Park. Or an aquatics center for 12 million? We already have one. We don't need another one. They're wasting it. Used elsewhere. Informed, this happened at Wendy Hill, too, with 42 million. We had a town hall meeting, a referendum, that it was 42 million, and now they started the project without anybody having a say in that. If they knew it was 42 million, they would have never passed it.
Mr. Bakary, your time has expired, and we have others who are, who signed up to speak.
By the way, I've asked for five minutes to be added, like Cobb County, and I just want to stress to you, we pay your salary. It's what we want, not what you want, and it should be five minutes, not three minutes. The people should have a say in this. It's their money.
Thank you, sir. We have so many signed up to speak. Thank you for your comments. Thank you for your comments, Mr. Bakary. I will note that the SPOLOST was approved overwhelmingly in November, so these projects are what you, as voters, did approve, so we are doing what you asked us to do. The next one is David Lincoln, 2860 Parkwood Road, Road/Park Improvements. Good, thanks for being here.
Oh, I didn't realize that. Okay, well, I'll start over slightly here about going down Wendy Hill there and how nice it is coming off of 75 until you reach Arthur Bacon Bridge, at which point Wendy Hill has been, like, torn up for a very long time, and I thought that was a SPOLOST project that would be accomplished according to the architectural road construction rendering that we saw of nice, like, an underpass, surface rotaries, roundabouts. And now that just seems like that's on the back burner, and so I don't understand how any traffic, really credible traffic study can be done until Wendy Hill is resolved, because you have a lot of people that don't own a Jeep and won't drive 30 miles an hour over that roughshod road. And so what's happened, it's made our neighborhoods permeable. All those east-west streets, we're seeing increased traffic, and I've been there so long, I see these traffic patterns. I'm there by day because I work at night, so I see that traffic. This increase is getting worse, and unfortunately Wendy Hill's stagnating. I don't know what's going on. I've heard the plans changed, so I'm kind of flabbergasted that here we are talking about selling some property, a green space, to a brewery when you have plenty of space in South Cobb. Put it down there, finish the Wendy Hill project. I mean, where the old blockbuster is, that's a vast area, good parking. It could be, there's investments from other businesses along South Cobb, and I think they'd appreciate it, like Mexico Linda, they mostly, they just did a great renovation during the pandemic, good timing on their part. You have a really good investment at the top corner there where Kroger's rebuilt, and essentially that shopping plaza is rejuvenated. It's great. Chick-fil-A's put big money into a new restaurant. So as, the city of Smyrna is not just this small area up here, and I think we've concentrated so much effort that we need to expand it a little bit. I mean, after all, I went to a ballgame the other night with my daughter, Father's Day, excellent, hope you all enjoyed it, phrase one. But the great thing is, you know, you walk from the parking area, and that's a substantial walk from some of those business parks, and you say, "Well, you could walk that nice mile down bank and go to the brewery, and then you can make a nice walk up, see the fireworks, and have all that green space that we reserve, that the people own, on the right side of the community center," and not, not let that road slip through between the community center and the brewery there. I think that'd be a shame to do that. Now, as far as the rotary, I don't know the traffic study, and there again, because Wendy Hill, it's just a juggernaut there. We don't know, I mean, how are we going to get around that? So I don't see any answers with the Wendy Hill situation, no resolution, and I'm hoping for answers. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. We have, I know our engineers are here, we, I think we have 30 months or so left on Wendy Hill, and that's just a mess, and it is what it is, but all of the features that you mentioned are still in play. They're still the plan, it's just taking, it's just taking time. It's a massive, massive project, and to your comment about money being spent in the downtown, I'll reiterate what I said in my opening comments, it is not at the expense of other projects, or, other projects are not suffering because of what we're doing here. We have a holistic view, a holistic approach to how we're doing everything in the city, and that'll become more clear when I do my State of the City address next month, and we talk about the South Cobb improvements and all that we're doing over there, and the Ward 7 splash pad, and the aquatics facility, and all of those different things. The holistic vision will become a little bit more clear. That's July 28th at 6:00 p.m. I really appreciate you being here and thank you for your comments. Mr. Mike McNabb?
That'd be a great time to allow people to see planned traffic where they can make time. Tell Jonathan Bowles, "Hey, please..." Houses will show up.
Totally agree. Mr. McNabb, 750 Austin Drive.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Good evening, Mayor and Council.
Former Councilman Mike McNabb.
That's all right. As alumnus...
Former Councilman Doug Stoner, I should recognize while we're recognizing former council members.
As an alumnus of this body, Councilman Wheaton was exactly right. There was many a night that there were tough decisions to be made, and I'd just as soon step out, but you have to stand here and take that. You can relax, I'm not going to debate with you the design. I agree with the council that downtown needs to be refreshed. Smyrna is what it is today because we painted in bold colors, and we need to continue to paint in bold colors. However, this was not your finest hour tonight, and let me explain why. There's people that are frustrated here tonight, including myself, because you rushed a decision. I understand that you've been discussing this with your design agents and among yourselves and with key stakeholders for months, but the public takes longer on any major issue to catch up. You're always going to be months ahead of where the public is in understanding where you are. This city is where it is today because we went through exactly the same. One of the things that's a little bit different is that I was here 30 years ago when we had those discussions, and we had the same problems. Mr. Cochran's father had to sit in on a number of meetings, and passions ran pretty high, and we had to control meetings that got out of hand occasionally. But the point was, you started with a high-level concept like you had last August with this current downtown, and then it turned into a first design, and we had weeks of public meetings that went months long, that led to a second iteration of design that then went weeks and months long. We never once in delivering this downtown took 13 days from the first time it was presented to the public to vote on it at council. That was not good governance, ladies and gentlemen, and let me explain and give you an example of why. Mr. Cochran will agree that this is not a zoning issue. Zoning does not apply, the city owns this. But I do think that zoning applies in one sense in terms of moral standard. This is off your website. These are your zoning guidelines. If you're a private citizen, if you own private property in the city of Smyrna, and I would ask the indulgence to finish my comment, Mr. Mayor, if you own property in the state, you have to get your planning rezoning request per this schedule to, turned in to the planning department 30 days, at least 30 days, prior to the Planning and Zoning Commission hearing, which is itself a minimum of 30 days prior before you hear it. So a mere zoning hearing requires 60 days of public input before it gets to mayor and council. I would submit to you that this community deserves better from this council than 13 days of consideration. Now, you may feel that you had plenty of discussion and plenty of input, but a lot of people here are just catching up with it. I would submit to you, as you go forward on additional SPOLOST items, give the public at least the same benefit of the doubt interval that you require us as private citizens to have a zoning issue heard by you. 60 days is the minimum required. You ought to do the same thing. We deserve at least that. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. McNabb. I'll admit that we did that with the study. This has been a long time in the making, not just less than 60 days, and that's just a disagreement, and that's fine, and I really appreciate you being here and making comments. Ms. Marie Smith, 1215 Bank Street. Doesn't look like she's here. This is written in very small print, Montserrat and Olton, 1367 Poplar Point. Welcome.
The mayor, council, I have never been to one of these public meetings, although I lived here in the city of Smyrna since 1993. I am a private individual, and I am not used to public speaking, but I want to say that I read the newspaper every day, and the first time that I saw these changes to the downtown was this past, it was either Friday or Saturday, and it really upset me. I went to the meeting Saturday evening, and I saw the map, and I saw the changes, and number one, it appears to me that the changes are all originated by the sale of the piece of land for a brewery, and has this sale been completed? We haven't heard about this sale.
And this is not a back and forth, but I will tell you, this, this, this concept was long before a brewery was considered there. The council has approved terms of the sale, and we have a letter of intent, so it's coming.
And the citizens of Smyrna approve this, this sale?
No, the council will approve this. And we represent the people, so that's, that's...
Without the knowledge of the people? It, I mean, I...
No, it'll be on an agenda. We have agreed to the terms of the sale, and we have a letter of intent.
You have a letter of intent, but has the sale been completed? That's my question. Is there a possibility that the brewery could be put somewhere else?
No, this council's already decided on that location, but finish your comments and...
Well, I just want to say that a brewery does not improve the quality of life of my, of me or the people in my neighborhood. I live about a mile and a half from here, and I don't see how this brewery is going to improve anything for any of us. And I see that, on the other hand, that it will increase crime, it will increase traffic, it will increase drunks, and probably accidents. So I'm very concerned about the brewery. So I'm very concerned about the brewery. So it seems to me that all the changes are originated by the placement of this brewery in this space. So I am... I hope that there is time for a reversal of this. There is other places in Smyrna that will benefit greatly of a new business. That business like that does not have any improvement to the downtown or to the people of Smyrna. I am... I will not patronize a business like this. And I don't even know if that would be a successful business in that location. I go to Belmont, to the restaurants there. I walk downtown all the time. As a matter of fact, I have meeting friends tomorrow to walk downtown. And, you know, we patronize the businesses. We like to spend our money here because our taxes go back to the city. But we also like to support businesses that are within our improvement. You know? So that's about all I have to say. I don't like the plane. I don't like the rezoning. I don't like taking the fountain. I grew up in Europe. In my hometown, there is a fountain that's been in existence since 1929, and it's the highlight of the town.
And we've got about a minute over, so we have to wrap up. Thank you so much for being here.
All right. Thank you very much for your time.
Thank you so much.
Thank you for speaking.
No, I'm not quite finished. I'll... I will say that a lot of the businesses that you mentioned, that you patronized, are supportive of the plan, not only the concept, but also the brewery and park coming in. They think it's going to do a lot to drive people downtown and support their businesses. So thank you for your comments. That's the last person that we've had sign up for citizen input. There's no other business to be brought before this body. Will be adjourned at 8:11.